Corn.
Yes, in fact, she has. Hi Kathy, it's also Scott Tong here. We know you have three brand new recipes to share with us. I could eat fresh corn every day, and I understand you Kathy, you're the same?
Not only can I, I pretty much do. I mean, the thing about seasonal foods is just that deep appreciation that comes with their short season. We have no time to take it for granted, so I'll often start the day with a corn fritter or a corn pancake and then have a salad or a corn chowder and then saute them on top of fish for dinner. Endless, endless possibilities.
Endless possibilities, oh yeah. And so you have new recipes, as we said. Your first one is for something that we seem to have a little bit of an argument around the news from pronouncing. It's either bruschetta or bruschetta. Corn, tomato, and goat cheese on top.
Bruschetta, bruschetta. I just spoke to, I just confirmed it with an Italian friend. Bruschetta. In any case, you could call this a savory toast or an open-faced sandwich. You take a thin slice of your favorite crusty, crusty bread, you crisp it up in olive oil, and then you spread it with a soft goat cheese, any type of cheese you like, and then you chop raw tomato, which is also in season, with fresh basil, and then corn kernels right off the cob are sauteed for just two minutes in a touch of butter, so you get this creaminess, and you place that on top. And this is so delicious, honestly, for breakfast with an espresso, with a glass of wine at the end of the day, for lunch with a salad, very easy.
The all-purpose bruschetta.
That's it.
All right, all right, just backing up Kathy. Removing corn from the cob.
Yes, very simple.
We have different methodologies in our household. How do you do it?
I shuck the corn, meaning I take the green, oh, I'm forgetting the word now. This, the, I shuck the corn, the, yeah, and then I remove the silky strands that line the inside. I place the cob upright inside a large bowl, and I use a large sharp knife, and I just cut down the side of the cob in a sawing motion to remove all the kernels, and then I get the other side, and if I missed any, I flip the cob over and get it, and you'll get some of the milky bits also. That's delicious. You just want to get everything you can off that cob, and it's, it's quite simple, and the bowl is there simply so the kernels don't fly all over your kitchen.
Wait a minute, did you say you cooked it first before you shucked it?
No, 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 raw, raw, raw. No, absolutely not.
And you're eating that way, or are you ever cooking it?
You can eat corn raw, you can saute it, you can do anything you want with it. Actually, in the next recipe, I use it two different ways. This is a corn, herb, and brown butter cornbread, and it's kind of a riff on one I've been making, so I use corn meal, but then I use these fresh corn kernels with fresh thyme, tarragon, basil, rosemary, and what's amazing about this cornbread, aside from everything, is that you put together the batter, you put it in a cast iron skillet or an oven-proof skillet, you bake it, and after 15 minutes, you add an extra cup of milk, and what happens is that it develops almost a custard layer, and it is creamy and so delicious, and it will redefine cornbread for you.
It didn't need to be redefined for me, I'll have it anyway, but yes. Kathy, we have to ask you about your recipe you have for us, for corn and black bean nachos. I'm in for that.
Okay, so I just feel like there are some days when you just want something salty and sweet, and you don't want that perfectly maybe ultimate healthy meal, and that is where nachos come in. So I used corn tortillas, and I sauteed black beans with red onion and cumin and chili powder and fresh corn kernels. Then I topped it with grated cheese, bake it till it's gooey, and then I topped the nachos with raw corn kernels, chopped tomatoes, cilantro or parsley, avocado chunks, and lime. Super easy, and really, this would be a delicious August dinner or a snack.
Can I ask you Kathy, when preparing corn, I want some tips about buying and storing and keeping the corn fresh. I talked to a friend from the Midwest once who said, you basically put on a pot of water to boil, then run out, pick the corn, and it'll be boiling by the time you get back in, and then it'll be fresh.
That is the ideal, yes, but short of living in the middle of a cornfield, when you're shopping for, for corn, the tricky thing is, you want to peek at the corn, and you really shouldn't do that, because once you start stripping the husk off, it starts to dry out. Corn that's old, the sugars turn to starch, and it's a starchy ear, so you want to look for corn silk that's brown and dry. A whole ear of corn should feel heavy in your hand, and if you're going to shuck a husk of corn, you need to buy it, because the farmer can't sell it. And just eat as much fresh corn this month as you possibly can, you won't regret it.
No, we won't. We've been talking corn with Here and Now resident chef Kathy Gunst. We have all her recipes at hereandnow.org. Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Lisa Mullins in Boston.
And I'm Scott Tong in Washington DC. Thank you Kathy. It's Here and Now.
At today's meeting, August 20th, 2024, at this time, I would like to welcome Reverend Luz Lecour. I'm sorry if I didn't get that correct ma'am, and invite her to come forward to the podium. And Reverend Lecour, I invite you to tell us about your church and to then lead us in prayer. When Reverend Lecour is ready to lead us in prayer, I invite all who so desire to stand for the prayer and to remain standing with the board in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. I'm Reverend Luz Lecour and the Senior Minister of Unity of Roanoke Valley. Unity of Roanoke Valley is a positive path for spiritual living. We emphasize the power of prayer, the importance of positive living, and most of all, our oneness with each other and with God. As a unity minister, I am dedicated to creating a space where individuals can explore their spirituality, connect with one another, and work together to build a more inclusive and supportive community. I am grateful for this opportunity to be here with you today and to offer the invocation as we begin this very important meeting. So thank you for allowing me to share this moment with you, and if we're ready, we can begin our invocation.
Thank you.
Gracious and loving spirit, we gather here today with hearts full of gratitude for the opportunity to serve this community. We ask for guidance and wisdom as deliberations and decisions are made that will impact the lives of those represented by this council. May today's discussions be filled with respect, compassion, and a genuine desire to seek common good. May we listen deeply to one another so that we can understand diverse perspectives and find common ground. Grant us all the courage to act with integrity and the humility to recognize when we need to change course. May all actions taken today reflect the values of justice, equality, and kindness. Let us hold in our thoughts all those in our community who are facing challenges and hardships. Will we be ever mindful of their needs and strive to create a more inclusive and supportive environment for all of us? May we be inspired by spirit, by the spirit of service and the power of collective effort during this meeting, and let us work together today to contribute to the flourishing of our community and the well-being of all its members. We ask this in the spirit of unity and peace, and claim it to be so. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon, welcome to our meeting for August 20th, 2024. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokecountyva.gov. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate or to attend Board of Supervisor meetings should contact the clerk of the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn all cell phones off or place them on silent. Item A, opening ceremonies. Number one, roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Item B, request to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda items. Are there any requests to postpone, add to, or change the order of the agenda, fellow board members?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Kaywood?
No changes, sir.
Mr. Lubek?
No changes, sir.
Thank you. Item C, briefing. Number one, briefing by Virginia Department of Transportation to provide information on transportation projects in Roanoke County. Chair welcomes Ken King, VDOT Salem District Engineer, Mike McPherson, VDOT Engineer. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. And let's see, I guess this will present as it comes up here.
There you go.
All right. Well, Chairman North and members of the board, I am Ken King. It's my pleasure to serve as the Salem District Engineer, which serves this 12-county area in this most beautiful part of the state, as I describe it, and glad to be with you here to talk about the signal improvements here at Starkey Road. As Chairman North mentioned, Mike McPherson, our District Traffic Engineer, will get into some of the numbers when we get to that part of our presentation. You know well, I think Brian Blevins, our Salem Resident Engineer, that serves you in that capacity. Also with this is Eli Mannen. Eli is the project manager over the project, and he's here in case you should have any detailed questions about some of the construction or details about the project itself. I will start with really a visit to, get this thing clicking on right, right. The arrows? Down arrow doesn't seem to be doing anything. Apologize. Down isn't that down?
I see there's 33 slides, so I know that there's.
All right, there is another slide. Thank you very much. Okay, now we've got it rolling. So I was before you not too, it's actually getting longer now than I, than I recall, but when we started looking at making improvements to the interchange at 220 Expressway and 419, you may recall, it's about a $20 million investment that we're doing in this Divergent Diamond that we're under the procurement process on now. We talked about some of the challenges of making that level of investment that will truly improve that interchange operation, but immediately following that is illustrated by the two red dots. You know, we've got some challenges with signals that generate, you know, backups of traffic, especially in today's condition, and we spoke about the opportunity for addressing those choke points and what is, we have, we have become to refer to as a through cut, and it is a change in the way we manage the traffic signal phases, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that, and you may recall from our prior meeting. So in the top left of this graphic is the rooftop of Starbucks, and the bottom right is the rooftop of Fleet Feet. So you've got Home Depot on the top, Lowe's on the bottom, and this is the intersection there at Valley Drive. The blue, the circle in itself represents a signal cycle, so starting at the beginning and going all the way around the clock, if you will, is to complete a one cycle of a traffic signal operation. Each of the different colors of that pie are the number of phases, we refer to those as the signal phase. The blue being illustrated here in the through movements on 220 is the first of the phase being illustrated, and it shows that it gets the majority of the percentage of the time. I think in this graphic it's showing 68%, because as you know, that's the biggest demand. So traffic signal timing is a little bit like democracy. Everybody gets a vote and the main street wins, right? So that's, that's how we typically work with those items. In the, in the other movements, this is 220 turning left into the side streets. That's another, it's a second of the phases. And then we go one side and then the other. So this serves all movements from the Home Depot side, and then finally, all movements from the Lowe's side. As it turns out, the traffic volumes for the through movements, not, not the lefts and rights off the side, but just those that go straight across the street in the peak hour, in this period of analysis, and I forget what year that was, but it was 26 vehicles in total from both directions in the peak hour that goes straight across. It was less than 1% of the traffic served at the entire intersection. So very few number of people making that move. So what, we have the opportunity in situations like that, or really many, many intersections, is to look at how we're serving and how many phases of that signal we have, and how can we serve movements that move as many people as possible, many cars at the same time, so where your demand is. So if we look at this in a little different way, and that's what we're, you know, preparing to do here at this intersection, is change this to a three-phase operation. So you would still have your main street movements on 220. You can see the pavement markings and some islands there that illustrate some points to come that that through movement would not be served. You can see from the side street, the next phase we would serve are the left turns from the main street, and then finally, the side street movements, which are predominantly those side street lefts, with the right turns being able to be made under some of the other phases and in yield conditions, you know, and at, and at that time as well. So what you don't have there is that through movement across the intersection. So in comparison, you've got the left and right, a four-phase operation, and you can see the percentage of time between them, and then to the left, the three-phase. As you can see, every movement gets either equal percentage of what was there before or more. So in this case, we put more time on the 220, the through movement. We go from 68% of the time to 75% of the time. So we're able to serve the higher volume movement for a longer period of that cycle, which increases the capacity that you're sending through that intersection at a given period of time. Another factor is, and I'll go ahead and build this little graphic out. So if we go from one phase to the other in this four-phase sort of circle example, you see the yellow and the red. Those are clearance intervals. So we, light goes yellow, you get a few cars that go through, but you know, you're supposed to be coming to a stop, and I see Mr. Mahoney grinning. Some people push that a little longer than they should. And then you have the red phase. There's actually a period of time, you really don't see it, because you don't see all signal indications at once, but there's a period of time, a second or two.
You could ask our chief about that.
Indeed.
In the back corner there.
That everyone, and the red phase, everyone has stopped. So there's an all red, it's usually a couple of seconds where everybody has stopped. We refer to this as lost time, because it's a time when no one is really being served. And even though you get some traffic through on the first part of that yellow clearance, when the light first goes green, as you know, you may have been frustrated before that people may not be paying attention, you don't immediately getting a lot of traffic going through at the very first part of the green. So that transition between one phase and the other, we call that lost time, because you really just lose it. You never get it back, and, and it's kind of, it compounds on itself. So, so a signal cycle is about 60 to 120 seconds, so a minute or two, on average, depends on the intersection. And you might think, I mean, in a given peak hour, that's at least 30 of those in a peak hour, or if it's a minute, it's 60 of those. And so if you're losing a little bit of time every cycle, you've heard about the compounded power of interest rates, you know, over time, it compounds on itself. Unfortunately, this is a negative compounded power, because that lost time, you lose it every single cycle, multiple times in the hour, multiple hours of the day, and days of the week, and weeks of the year. So when you, when you change that to go to a three-phase, we still have lost time, but we only lose that time in three phases. And while that only shows a 5% gain on the time, the compounded nature of that can be pretty big, pretty tremendous. The other factor is by shifting your time that you're allowing, and you're moving higher volume movements at that particular phase, you're also able to get more traffic through. So the collective power of that for this particular intersection, which was the driving intersection on 220, that one, you got Crossbow, those were the two real drivers right there around our downstream from the interchange. It shows that we did get, you know, the increased green time for all movements. So we got a little bit additional time on all movements. There was a reduction of lost time, and then it ended up being 88% equivalent to adding an additional through lane in each direction on 220. So if you think about the disruption on the side street businesses, think about the level of investment, something like that would happen, it shows you the power of being able to make operational changes in this phase elimination, if you will, and, and serving higher volume movement. So that's, that's what drove us to the through cut at that intersection. And a matter of fact, in this graphic, it shows, that's really what drove us to several of these through cuts. Through cuts work particularly well when you're crossing roads like 220, which I always liken to the Mississippi River. There's a lot of water that flows to the Mississippi, not a lot goes across it. The same thing is true of traffic. A lot flows, but doesn't cross. Now, Starkey, we're going to talk about, it's a little different. You've got a little bit more traffic that crosses Starkey, and we'll get into those details. But the power of this through cut and then reducing the number of phases has been such that we've, we are in the process of moving forward with procurement to apply that down the 220 corridor from Henry County all the way to the intersection here at Valley Drive. Likewise, and that, as I mentioned, was, was really started around the idea that we have to capitalize on the investment that we've made or we are making in the interchange. Likewise, we looked at that same technique in front of Tanglewood Mall, where you have made a significant investment, seems to be quite successful, in the reimagined 419, and all the activity that you're seeing. So this signal change is around trying to capitalize on and preserve that investment in a way that is meaningful in the, in the current, as soon as we get it implemented, but also in the years and decades ahead, because you've, you've saved that operational efficiency that you can preserve well into the future for opportunities that come along. So let's go to Starkey Road. I'm getting ready to hand it off to Mr. McPherson to get into some of the real details, because each intersection and how much of a savings it generates is specific to the intersection, the movements, the number of traffic volumes. So in this example, you have to the north, to the upper part of the screen is the Holiday and Tanglewood, you know, food line, that area. To the south, Roanoke Athletic Club, you know, and, and points in that direction. So there's the orientation of the intersection. The way this phase works today, it's a four-phase operations, first serving 419, represented in the blue, then we have the 419 left turns to the side street, and then just like 220, we serve each side of the street. First, you know, the upper portion of Starkey coming from the Holiday Inn side, and then the lower portion coming from the rack side. And there's the four-phase arrangements that are in place, and the percentage of time roughly dedicated in terms of the time for that cycle, what's dedicated to each movement. So you can see we've added some graphics here on the screen that illustrate islands that would direct traffic and, and move away from this crossing movement, and you, the, I'll show you the percentage changes, but that blue has gotten a little larger. We've got a little bit more time on 419, but also the, the time has gotten bigger for these other movements, the left turn off of 419, as well as the movements off of the Starkey on the side streets. So let me check a note here real quick. So really, it's about the redistribution of this time, and if you can see in the graphic, you have the 46% of the time represented on the left for 419 shifts to a larger percentage of 59%, and then you see the 17% going to 19, and then eventually there are the 22% that serves the side street lefts. So it is a redistribution of that time and the savings of that transition between phases that really generates the power of these operational improvements. And that is the intersection sketch that represents what became the application in round four of Smart Scale from the county, that certainly we were pleased as VDOT to be partners in the, the analysis and development and work with that, with members of your staff and team. And the, you'll see a crossing across the center of the intersection that represents a pedestrian movement, and I've asked Mr. McPherson to talk about that a little bit as well. You may recall back on the discussion we had on 220, we talked about if we widen 220, you know, we would, we would have an additional lane in each direction. It makes it, at that point in time, I know the city as well as the county, we're, we're really looking at bike and pedestrian issues and trying to make things as pedestrian and bicycle friendly as possible. And I know that's an objective here in the Tanglewood Activity Center as well. And so the wider you make a street, the longer it takes to walk across, and the more challenging it gets, especially for older users. Certainly, bicycle, pedestrian, and transit benefits from keeping roads as narrow as possible. So maximizing the efficiency is a big, is a big benefit here. And this pedestrian phase and the fact that we need to serve that, and how we're going to serve that, that actually has a big play in the operational effect here. So I'm going to hand it off to Mr. McPherson. He'll first share with you that like 220, Starkey benefits significantly in operational improvements, and then he'll walk through some numbers, and I'll be back in just a second.
Mr. McPherson?
Thank you.
Actually, the first thing I'm going to mention is actually about the pedestrians, just because Ken had mentioned it, and so I figured I'd go ahead and, and expand on it just a little bit. One of the big benefits of the way we've got the pedestrians crossing designed right now is that there's a refuge island in the middle. And so everybody does, you know, if they're crossing 419, they don't have to cross all the way. They can cross half the road, stop at the refuge island, they continue on next time that they have a pedestrian phase that they can, that they can move in. And what that does is it shortens the amount of time that's needed for those pedestrians to cross, which also means that we're not taking time away from, from the vehicle traffic. So that's just, you know, one, one key point I just did want to mention since Ken was talking about the pedestrians. To give you an idea, you know, I'm just going to go right to the, to the big numbers here as far as, you know, what kind of savings we're having. Like I just mentioned, with the, with the build, when you don't do the through cut, you know, we are going, the plan would be to add that pedestrian movement, which would add more time to the cycle length whenever there is a pedestrian call. And when you do that, you're going to end up reducing the intersection capacity, and you're also going to increase the time for the, for the delay of the vehicles. And so not a good thing if you just, you know, don't build the, the through cuts and you do put in a pedestrian crossing. It's, it's more of a negative as far as the vehicle traffic. Certainly does provide the, the benefit for the pedestrian, but in the build with through cut, we still have that benefit for the pedestrian being able to cross, but since those times are shorter, we're not taking time away from the vehicle traffic, and so we're not seeing that kind of delay. So when you have the through cut in our build condition, we're actually going to reduce the amount of delay by 57%, which is a pretty good number. You know, it's about almost a third of what you had before, you know, so that's, or 40% of what you had before. So that's, that's a pretty big savings. The other thing is that there's also that increase in capacity that Ken had mentioned, and the increase in capacity at this particular location is 33%. So, you know, right now, you have about 4,000 vehicles going through that intersection during the peak hour. With this increased capacity, you're above 5,000. So that's, that's a pretty good increase in the amount of people that can go through that intersection with the through cut. And we'll take a look at some of the numbers here. You'll see first off that unlike Valley Avenue, we actually have some higher volumes here going straight through. You have 175 going southbound and 89 going northbound. So those are not insignificant numbers. However, there are good routes for them to go, particularly going northbound. You can make that right onto 419, make the left onto Ogden, and you're right where you had been before. If you're coming down Ogden, or, yeah, if you're coming down Ogden, instead of taking a right onto Starkey, go down to 419, take a right there, get to Starkey, make your left. So there's some really good movements there that, that we can utilize. There's also the possibility of going down to, or still taking Starkey, going down to 419, taking a right, making a U-turn. Certainly that possibility, and actually, that ends up being a little bit better quite often, as I will show you. So, so those are some of the numbers that we're looking at, and I just wanted to point out those through numbers since they are higher. But when you look at the individual approaches and the type of delays that we're getting. But when you look at the individual approaches and the type of delays that we're getting, in the existing condition, going southbound during the peak hour, our delay is, you know, 84 seconds, which is pretty high. But when we do the through cut, all of a sudden, it is down to 90, or 9.4 seconds. Some of that is due to redistribution of the traffic and having them make a right, which is a very efficient movement. But a lot of it's actually just that, you know, we don't have that 175 going straight through anymore. Some of them are going to be on Ogden, making a right there and going that way. Some of them will come up to the Starkey intersection at 419, make a right, make the U-turn. But it's that redistribution of that traffic that had been going straight through, and then all of a sudden, we're making, or having them do a right. So, that's the key there. And you have the same key on the northbound as well, where it's being redistributed. And you're going from a 79-second delay down to a 17-second delay. Again, a pretty big savings for that entire approach. Now, does that mean that everybody's going to see that delay? Well, no. It's typically the left turns, you're still going to see a fair amount of delay for the left turns, but the through movement that had been delayed is really no longer there. It's more of the right turns. And those right turns are very efficient. In fact, the northbound right is a free flow, so they don't even stop at all. So, that's where we're seeing a lot of the improvements. So, whoops, I'm going to go back one here. There we go. The other place that you see some improvements is actually on 419. And you'll see two different things here. One, going eastbound, you'll see that there's only a decrease in the delay by a little bit over a second. And the reason for that is that you have everybody coming at random times coming up to the intersection. And so, that really does not change all that much. It changes a little bit because we were able to lengthen the green time, but it doesn't change all that much. But you do see a pretty good drop on the westbound, going from 40 seconds down to 16 seconds. And what's happening there is really more due to coordination. With all those improvements that we have right in front of Tanglewood Mall, where we're going to reduce the number of phases, that's increasing the green time. That green time actually also increases the band where you have coordination going all the way through those intersections. And so, when you get to Starkey Road, and we've also increased the green time there, it helps push everybody through. And so, that's why we do see a pretty good drop at that location as well going westbound. It does bring up the question, though, of what happens to those people who do want to go straight through and, you know, what's going to happen with their delays. And so, we did some travel time runs. We went out and did several runs on, you know, for each of these scenarios that I'm going to talk about. And you'll, what you'll see is that the travel times, yeah, they change and they do increase, but they don't increase a tremendous amount. So, the first one we looked at was if you're going northbound on Starkey, going straight through the 419 intersection, going up to Ogden, and then taking a left on Ogden. And we're calling that a cut through because you're not stopping anywhere along Starkey. And what you'll see is that we've gone from an average travel time of 2 minutes and 24 seconds, and the amount of time that we're increasing by having them make a right onto 419 and then a left onto Ogden is only 4 seconds. So, it's really not a big change at all. If you're going the other direction, if you're on Ogden and taking a right onto Starkey and going through the 419 intersection, again, not stopping, so this would be the southbound cut through. You know, again, you can do the same things in reverse. You go down to 419, you make a right, and you take a left onto Starkey, and your increase in time is 13 seconds. So, again, it's a little bit, but it's not a terrible amount. And, you know, the other option is you can still take your right onto Starkey, go down to 419, then you can make a U-turn and then get back onto Starkey itself. And that only took 16 seconds longer. And these are travel times that, you know, we did just about a month ago. So, these are pretty recent values that you're seeing. Now, if you're going to go, let me see here. Next slide. Now, if you're going to go from Starkey going north and you're going to go to Food Lion, this is where you see a little bit more delay. Again, you could have, you've got two options. You can go down to Ogden and take a left onto Ogden, and then I'll take a left onto Starkey to get to Food Lion. And that's going to add about 94 seconds of delay. The other option is to make a right onto 419, make a U-turn, and that only adds 23 seconds of delay. So, again, you know, 23 seconds is not a whole lot. You know, I know there's been some concern about maybe not being able to move over to get to that U-turn location, in which case, you can still just go down to Ogden and make that left. Again, at that point, it's about 94 seconds of delay. Really, that equates to basically seeing through one more cycle of a light, and that's about it. If you're going southbound from Food Lion, again, we see the same type of thing where you can go down, make a U-turn, that's going to add about 26% or 26 seconds. Again, that's not a long time, especially when you look compared to those improvements that we were seeing on that previous slide, you know, where we're showing the entire intersection. If you go over to Ogden, then down to 419 and make a left, that's a minute, or 114 seconds, so that's almost 2 minutes. Again, it's a little bit longer, but if, you know, I look at it and you think if I was only going from between the southern part of Starkey, you know, down near the rack up to Food Lion, and that was the only movement I was doing, that wouldn't, it would not sit pretty well with me as far as making this through cut. However, most people are not doing just that one movement. They're also making a right onto 419, or they're making a left onto 419. And that's where you see all the other improvements. And overall, it's still, the project is still beneficial, I think, to everybody who lives off of Starkey, not for that one through moment, but for all the other movements that So, again, going back to the other slide. So, like I said, all those times that I was looking at for the increased travel time ranged from anywhere from 4 seconds, really up to about 30 seconds. Or if you end up having to do the longer route, it was 2 minutes. But again, that's not, you know, it's not a huge amount as far as I'm concerned if you're only doing that once in a while. But look at the volume, or the delays that we had for all the others. You know, when we're talking about overall change on Starkey of reducing delays by 75 seconds coming southbound and 62 seconds going northbound, those other ones don't look too big to me. But maybe that's just me, but, you know, I'll take those numbers any day. And with that, I'm going to hand it back to Ken.
Yeah, so, to be fair, those savings in this example, and I'll see if this thing will give an arrow. Man, I can't. Maybe I can do it with the graphic here. I can't. So, the Starkey coming from the rack side, if you look, see the island that we have there that you've come to, see, that's a protected, so we have two through lanes coming, you know, from the west, coming eastbound. And when you get beyond Starkey, we've got three lanes in each direction, right? We have three lanes in, excuse me, we have three lanes in that eastbound direction. So, there's a lane act. So, what we're going from is we're going from a condition right now where you have to stop, you have to yield. In the future, that'll be a dedicated lane. So, that right turn just keeps free flowing, right? So, some of this big savings that you've got is really being driven by the fact they don't have to stop there in the future now. But they haven't completed their trip, right? They still have to get, now, if they're headed toward 220, that's outstanding. I mean, they don't have to stop, they go straight onto 220. If they're trying to head to Salem, we showed the, you know, the left turn, you're still going to have to wait to get a, you know, green light to make the left. If you're headed straight, then indeed, you're going to run into some a little bit longer trips depending upon where you're going. But while, you know, if you live there, I've got a feeling that many people turn right to go to 220, to go to the hospitals or the mall, you know, various places in the larger community, and also make a left to go to points, you know, out in that direction, they're not always just making the crossing maneuver. And when you look at the savings that they have from all these others, it's a big benefit to not, to the entire intersection. And the one thing I'll point out on this graphic that I added down at the bottom, the last bullet, is really, you know, when you look at how it operates today and you compare it with many traffic signals around the state, certainly around the country, this is not tremendously congested. You know, we have our peak hour, and we have our challenges. But what we don't fully realize is what the future holds, not just next year, but in 10 years. And, you know, some of what you're doing to invest in, you know, the reimagining 419 and all the vision that we have in our local communities, it's really about serving the next generations and the opportunity. And what this really does is it preserves intersection capacity for that future community and economic opportunities in the years ahead and the decades ahead. Because it will provide for you capacity at the intersection that when a developer comes in and is proposing to redevelop something or to develop maybe a piece that hasn't been developed yet, you have a spot. Many of the spots out here, as you know, are already developed, so you'd be talking about redevelopment of new interaction and opportunity. It will provide them that added capacity at the intersection to be able to work with a plan. And, you know, we require them to do traffic impact analysis, to look at how can they make this new redeveloped site work within the framework of our communities? And it'll give them the capacity to work with that. Really, it's a matter of making, you know, adage, "We don't want to just work hard, we want to work smart." This is one of those things of rephasing our signals so they work smarter and we're able to have a bigger bang for our buck in the time that we're allocating to each of those movements. So, with that, be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any board members wish to comment or ask questions?
Thank you, Mr. King and Mr. McPherson. You probably heard from Mr. Kewood, I'm the reason why you are here today. As I indicated, I guess, a couple months ago when this first surfaced, unfortunately, I had missed the community meeting that I think we had scheduled for, I think it was in June. Of all the community meetings I've attended in my entire career in Roanoke County, this is the greatest number of irate citizen complaints I have received for any one of them, and all focused on the through cut. But before I get there, let me ask some dumb questions. With respect to the pedestrian component, if there were no through cut, would you still be able to have? I understand what you say, and I think you need that safety island, islands plural. If you did not have through cut, from a safety perspective, could you even have citizens, pedestrians crossing?
You could. What you'd have to do, though, is you'd have to increase the
The delay time?
The phase, you know, for Starkey Road in order to allow those pedestrians to cross all the way in a single movement. And that's going to incur more delay and less capacity at the intersection itself. You could have them safely move, but there's a cost.
Yeah, Mr. McPherson, just to add to that, see this diagonal crossing? If you can look at my arrow kind of moving across the screen. With that occurring, when we're serving the side street lifts, there's enough side street lifts, in particular, coming off of the southern leg, you know, the bottom leg of Starkey, that there's a fair amount of time there that's being taken, and we provide that refuge. If we didn't have the through cut, the only way we could do that through cut, obviously, in that diagonal crossing, is if we had the through cut in place. Without it, we would probably move and cross in this, the western leg of the intersection. And then, what that would have to exist with is one of the two side street phases, in particular, this, really, this Holiday Inn side phase. And what would happen is you would serve the traffic before the pedestrians have completed their route. So, then, you're holding up everybody for that pedestrian to finish their crossing maneuver, and that's where you start to introduce some loss.
Because I think it's, clearly, it's one of our, one of Roanoke County's priorities to try to have more pedestrian access in this entire area. And that was part of our 419 reimagined plan. If I'm, okay, second question. If I'm on Star, I'm on the south side of 419, and I'm trying to look, right now, I have in effect two lanes to make a left onto 419 going to Salem. And looking at the schematic, do we still have two lanes making a left, or is it only one lane?
I believe it's down to a single lane. Again, though, when you start looking at the volumes and the amount of time it's going to take, and because you're, you know, serving that movement at the same time as the lifts coming southbound, you know, it will take a couple extra seconds, but the timing actually provided those extra seconds for you to take or to have.
Because like right now
So, you're still being able to serve everybody with the green time that's available.
See, right now, like I said, there's two lanes that can make that left-hand turn as you're heading, I guess, west onto 419. And I guess I was afraid if we cut that down to one lane, then you get such a stacking that you're blocking, you're blocking entrance into the rack. Because I see a lot of people coming from Tanglewood on 419, making a left and then making a left again to get to the rack. And I guess I was just concerned that by losing a lane, you might have more confusion and more backup as you head south on Starkey.
Well, also consider, though, that the existing lane configuration is a left and a through left, okay? And so, we've taken a fair number of cars out of that by making them make a right. So, you don't have the entire volume that you do now in those two lanes because you've taken a pretty substantial amount in having them turn right. So, it's not the same number of vehicles that are making that left. So, the queue is, yeah, it'd probably be about the same as it is right now. I've not looked at the queue numbers. However, knowing what the delays are, it's going to be probably about the same.
Okay, thank you. Because, like I said, just looking at the schematic, it was hard for me to discern whether it was one or two.
Yeah, and again, you have to consider we're going from a through and a through left down to a single left and taking those throughs and making them take that right.
I guess for me, I appreciate the time savings on 419. I guess from my perspective, and this is not just a Hunting Hills issue, this is, as you go all the residential developments, as you head south on Starkey, whether it's Woods Crossing, then you get on to Buck Mountain Road and Branderwood and King's Chase and Parkway Place, I just see all those people, well, I'm personalizing it because I try to avoid 419. I like to go across Starkey because that lets me get to Food Lion, Bellacino's, Ben Gooey, Buffalo Wild Wings, Mill Mountain, and then I take the back way into Tanglewood. So, that if I want to get to the Kroger or the Barnes &amp; Noble, I go behind Tanglewood. I don't fight my way through the front. I understand the argument that if you come to Starkey and you make a right-hand turn, you can make that same turn left on Ogden. It just seems odd to me that we would be adding more traffic to 419 when we can avoid adding traffic by having a through cut. And for the life of me, there's no way in heck I'd try to make a U-turn on 419 on any time of day. That doesn't sound safe to me. So, I don't know how you balance safety with time. All of that, though, from a speeching point of view, let's cut to the chase, the bottom line. If this change were made so that you could still go straight across Starkey, is that such a substantial change in the project that Roanoke County would have to reimburse the Commonwealth of Virginia for that change?
So, that is a question that would have to be analyzed. If the board so made that decision to try to move away from that, we would have to go through a process with our central office to look at that. But certainly, I think that we could work through that process, the outcome of which I can't tell you the result of right now because it is something that, you know, the way that works is you'd have to indicate your desire to move in that direction, and then we would make that request to have that analyzed. I think the bigger piece that I would encourage is identifying what you want the future of this area to be in terms of the desire for the intersection operation and the opportunity to realize, you know, the 419 vision of expanded growth. Let that be your guide, you know, in terms of ultimately the decision this board makes. And then, from there, we'll certainly work to advocate in the direction that you want this to this to, to head. And, because I do think there's certainly a balance of issues here. I will say, the, the, and the benefit, who gains or loses, I know you made the mention of the benefit on 419, and we often look to, in the example we talked about 220, matter of fact, we even talked about corridor preservation, preserving the movement capability of the corridor. I spoke to this one a little differently, in that it's the intersection, the preservation of the capability of that intersection overall. Because really, some of the biggest benefit of reduced delay for this proposed improvement is actually those on Starkey. It's, it's the, when you're going to church, when you're going to any other place, you're such a winner that overall, you're going to benefit. It's the only lost opportunity you have is that time that you do go to Food Lion. Not, not to belittle that, because I know that's a very active center and vibrant place. But every other movement you make, you're a really big winner at this intersection overall. And the corridor works together.
I, I just don't want to hurt. I don't want to harm other businesses.
Absolutely.
And that's, that, that whole stretch from Starkey, as you wheeled around to Tanglewood West to get to Ogden, there's a lot of commercial operations, there's a lot of offices. And I just hate to have any harm visited upon them because of this loss. And, you know, I, it, to me, it's, I, I see clearly the benefits. Obviously, the right-hand turn off of Starkey onto 419, and the additional lane is fantastic.
Yeah.
Seeing what has occurred over the last couple of years with that additional lane to get you onto 220 South is, to me, it's probably the biggest benefit we've had in, in this part of the county in decades. So don't want to harm that, don't want to slow that process down. I just don't know how to balance what I perceive as safety, as I said, the way that I could see doing a, a U-turn on 419. And if that's what we're trying to encourage people to do, that, that part is scary to me. But I do see the benefit in time. How do you, how do you balance off those, those elements? Clearly, if Roanoke County has to reimburse the Commonwealth for a change, that's not going to happen. I don't think any one of us would be willing to vote for that kind of alternative. But thank you. I appreciate. I guess the one other aspect is, one of the citizens who wrote me, I won't identify him, but he had quoted some percentages to me and some numbers as to the amount of vehicles that, that utilize the through cut at different times of the day. I have no idea of how he counted that, whether he sat there on the corner and counted them one afternoon, that I don't know. But he was looking at percentages as high as like 29%. And that, that doesn't mesh with the data that you're giving me. The data you're showing is probably half that, 13%.
It's a little bit less than 10%.
Maybe 13%, yeah.
Is what we're showing.
Well, I think that would depend, if you're looking at the percentage of traffic on Starkey, you know, and from, like, for instance, from Food Lion coming south, if you look, you know, you've got 175, 145, and 35, so there's a big movement.
Yeah, but if I compare that to both ways-
On both ways on, yeah, no, I-
On 419.
That, that might be an off-peak-hour condition, like a random hour of the day, you might catch something like that. But, but yeah, during the peak hour, th- those volumes are pretty high on 419. One thing I will say around the safety concerns, Mr. McPherson talked about the fact that these signals work as a system. And so that system does create gaps. So where you're trying to make a U-turn today is, can be a little more challenging than what it would be in the future, because when we get better coordination of those signals, we're able to create, create better gaps. And there are times of the day where I think I've made that U-turn and feel very safe doing so. There's probably other times where I chose not to, because it's a pretty busy time, and you can go down to Ogden and make that U-turn at Ogden, or go up the hill at Ogden. So there are certainly options for safe route. But I certainly appreciate the need for us to preserve, especially all of our active businesses. I understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, because I got some questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's, let's talk about this intersection and then talk about the 220-419 project. When, which one's going to start first? And then, secondly, whatever starts next, about what's the timeline?
So this, the 220 interchange is, we're in procurement with that now.
Yeah.
So we should see a construction start in the spring. And then in terms of, of this project-
It is set for work-
Spring 27.
Spring, yeah, good, spring 27. So we're, we're two years out from-
So you'll be finishing 220-419, or close to finishing that before this one starts?
Yeah, the interchange is a three construction seasons, so we start in the spring, we'll likely start in the spring of '25 and be wrapping up in '28. So it's a little, it's a little lengthy. It's a lot of segment pieces to that, so.
I got you.
It would be quick to build it if we could get everybody to stay out of the intersection while we construct it. We could get it done really fast. But having to build it under traffic slows things down.
Well, with that said, there's going to be a lot of people figuring out the backroads, ways to get to from in here and there, so, and I'm one of them. Secondly, are you planning on extending the U-turn lanes that will absorb this additional traffic from Starkey? In other words, if I turn right coming out of Starkey and I want to go over to play it against sports, or I want to go over to Food Lion, I go down and that would be the first left turn I can make a U-turn on then? Are you, because I'm, I'm sure there could be some stacking issues there. If there's not enough space to make the left U-turn down on 419, you're going to hold up traffic on 419, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, I don't know that we identified the need to lengthen those because of the added volume, because I think there's enough stacking to, to handle that. Although I know there's also a lot of drainage elements to this, so there, there may be other elements that drove that. Do we increase that storage?
There's still being studied, and there'll be some improvement.
Okay.
Okay.
So we don't have that final determination. That's, I guess, why I didn't know that.
Right. Okay, I just thought I'd bring that up, because-
I mean, that, that's one of the things that we are very typically concerned with. And so as we go through the process, we always try to make sure that the, there's enough storage to handle that.
Can some of this data and analysis that you've put together, can some of that be shared on Thursday evening for some of the 460 interchanges?
We have, we certainly have a fair amount of information to be shared at the 460. One of the, obviously, one of the challenging aspects of that is the 220 alternate intersection.
Yeah.
And so we actually have a video that, that actually shows you, if you're setting in a vehicle view of how to transition and how that, how that intersection will work in the future.
Right.
So we have both that. Now, some of the specific trips in terms of the length and how much different, we, you know, there's, that's a much bigger overall project, and we have, we don't have that information for Thursday. But certainly, we could, we could help address issues that may be of concern or question on particular movements like that, just like we did with this one movement of Starkey at some point in the future.
I'd like to target first meeting in October, staff, invite Mr. King back if it suits his schedule, share some of that with the intersections along 460, similar to what you've done today. I think it would be beneficial for people at home to see that. There's probably going to be a big crowd on Thursday, and people are going to be moving around from one display to the next. But this has been helpful for people understanding. And I think, you know, a picture's worth a thousand words. Maybe, maybe we can do that first meeting in October, if both staff's schedules, the agenda and yours work out.
Be, be glad to do that. And 460 is certainly similar to the 220 corridor, in that you've got the city of Roanoke, Roanoke County, and really, you know, what you, you may end up having a little bit longer ability to get to a particular crossing point on the 460 corridor. But then when you look at the, the portfolio of improvements that's taking place from Interstate 581 all the way to 220 alternate, you're going to be a big winner, you know, in terms of your daily commute along that corridor as well. So there's going to be a similar, I've talked to some of our friends in Franklin County that was concerned about some of the changes of signals. I said, yeah, you might pay a little bit of price of getting on 220, but we're going to get you through Roanoke County into the hospital and the doctor's office a lot quicker. And so it is, it's a corridor view.
Right.
And, and that's a big aspect of 460.
Sure. Appreciate your presentation today. No other questions? Do you have a question?
Yeah, just-
Mr. Radford?
Just a couple of questions or thoughts. So I use 220 turn left going east on 419. I've noticed for years, that left-hand lane, you've got two lanes going on with a bridge and heading, heading east, that left lane stays congested all the way up until you get to Starkey. And when you turn left, you have all those businesses, truck, gas trucks are turning left. After they clear, then it really, it clears out to where you can get on around 419. Will this signalization help that at all?
Let Mr. McPherson speak to that, because that speaks to, I think, part of the progression of the signals that you were talking about.
Yeah, I mean, as far as progression, it's certainly going to help the progression going all the way to Starkey and, you know, basically, I think, quicker. You get to Starkey and being able to make that left, the better off you're going to be on 419, obviously. So is that, does that address your-
I think so. I think the, he was talking in terms of making that left and then how that helps progress. When we do these phase eliminations, you know, one of that redistribution of time is time back to 419 for that movement. And so when we, two things happen. You're providing more time. But more importantly, when you're looking at a corridor, the spacing of intersections doesn't always work out like we'd love it, right? So they're spaced in a way where you, you're trying to get a progressive band of green. But if we make that time at each of those intersections wider, then we're able to, to actually get more of a band of traffic, of traveling through. And the corridor overall benefits a lot, and it will indeed help what you are addressing. We have, I think we likely have some, some micro-simulation type stuff that's at an analysis level that, that illustrates that more fully. So we certainly could share specifics, but it does indeed help that progressive movement.
Yeah, I was telling Mr. Mahoney, I, we have a warehouse that we use on, on Starkey. So I'm always going, I'm never going straight. I'm always turning left or turning right. And that left-hand turn is just so hard to get through.
Yeah.
So, good, good to know.
Well, then your rates, once you get through the intersection with Penforest Boulevard, where it goes from two lanes down to one.
Well, I'm always on the right. It doesn't matter, because my warehouse is on the right, so.
I was going to say, that's a separate issue.
That's a separate issue. We want to talk about that.
But, but another thing is, you know, with the redistribution of time, we're actually also providing a little bit longer time to make those lefts. So not only do you have that progression, but also-
Right, yeah.
Because I think you show it earlier on, where you, you show the, the colored circles, and you were showing the greater percentage of being able to make that left off of Starkey onto, left off of 419 onto Starkey.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good explanations. All right, moving on to the agenda to Item D, New Business. Item one, Resolution Authorizing Economic Development Incentive Agreements with one, the County of Roanoke, the Roanoke County Economic Development Authority, and Mack Trucks Incorporated. And two, the County of Roanoke, the Virginia Economic Development Partnership Authority, the Roanoke County Economic Development Authority, and Mack Trucks Incorporated. Chair recognizes Megan Baker, Director of Economic Development. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Let's see, do we get that started? Here this afternoon to provide an overview of the two Mack Truck performance agreements that relate to the $14.5 million investment that was announced in February of this year. A brief, a brief background about Mack Trucks. They opened in July 2020 in the Valley Tech Park, 278,000 square feet in the former R.R. Donnelly Building. Their initial performance targets for their opening were 250 jobs, 13.5 million investment. And as of the end of 2023, they far surpassed that, created 350 jobs, and invested 20 million. The most recent expansion is 70,000 square feet expansion, $14.5 million, $10 million in real estate to increase their production of medium-duty trucks, and also to add electric vehicle truck production. So I have the breakdown here, 10 million facility expansion and about 5.5 million machinery and tools and business personal property. And they are creating 51 new jobs with an average salary of around 52,000. So the performance agreement on the local level, there's the abatement of net new taxes over an 84-month period, seven years, with an estimated value of 842,000. This value is uncapped, so if they invest more, they will be reimbursed for that. The company must create 51 jobs. If, if they create less, the, the reimbursement will be adjusted proportionally. And if the investment and employment targets are met during the seven-year period, but they do not reach that 842,000, they will have an additional three years to reach that total. And so that is the, the total of our local agreement. We also have, we are party to the state agreement with Mack Trucks as well, because the EDA and the board serve as a conduit for the state's incentive to the company.
Thank you.
And that, any questions?
So your motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions on the motion? I will just comment that this was necessary in order to retain this important employer in Roanoke County, and good work proactive team of economic development.
Yes, they were looking in Pennsylvania and other locations.
Yes.
Really happy to see them grow here in Roanoke County.
Thank you, Megan. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item E, First Reading of Ordinances. Number one, ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property containing approximately 2.71 acres located at 4818 Starkey Road, Roanoke, Virginia. Roanoke County Tax Map number 087.07-01-16.00-000. Chair recognizes Doug Blot, Assistant County Administrator, for the first reading and request for a second reading.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The Public Service Center is located at 1206 Kessler Mill Road, and the building was built in 1950. It was the original Rowe Furniture Plant. The county acquired the building in 1985 to move many different county functions there. But during the renovations, the building was impacted by the flood of 1985, which delayed those renovations. And many of the county departments were not able to move in until 1987. Over the years, there's been different departments, such as General Services, Stormwater, Communications Shop, Parks, Recreation and Tourism, and the Utilities Department at one time. In 2016, it was identified by the Board of Supervisors, as well as staff, that the Public Service Center needed to be replaced due to the building conditions, constant flooding, as well as stormwater concerns. A study was completed that year that outlined a plan for replacing the building and the different operations at the complex. The replacement plan had two phases for relocating these different county functions. Phase one of the replacement plan was completed in 2022 with the addition onto the Fleet Services Center for General Services and the Communications Shop to move their operations to 5263 Hollands Road. In addition, new shop buildings were constructed for the Stormwater Department, as well as the West County Parks Team. Also, the purchase of 5305 Hollands Road was to be used for the future operations of Parks and Recreation. Phase two of the replacement project included relocating the Parks, Recreation and Tourism Administrative Office functions, as well as the park operations. The original plan was to construct a new administrative buil- building and park maintenance complex at the 5305 Hollands Road parcel. Late in 2023, we became aware, as we were developing cost estimates for this construction project, that the cost of new construction was growing substantially. And it was going to exceed the monies that we had available for the project. So staff began looking at what was available on the market in terms of existing office buildings for sale, which brings us to you today. Before you for consideration is to purchase 2.71 acres of an existing building located at 4818 Starkey Road. The building is approximately 12,000 square feet and located within a half mile of the administration building here in the Cave Spring District. It is the former Delta Dental Office Building. The property located at 4818 Starkey Road is currently owned by the Economic Development Authority of Roanoke County. The purchase price for the property will be $1,907,152.33. The purchase price also includes the contents of the building, which is all of the furniture. This purchase would allow Roanoke County to have cost avoidance of over $2 million, as our estimate to construct a new 10,000-square-foot office building was over $4 million. Funding for the purchase of this property and renovating the existing building will come from Roanoke County's bonds through the Virginia Resource Authority as part of the 2022B fall issuance. To use this bonding for, for the purchase and the use of this project, it must be amended to the VRA bond fund, finance leasing, as well as the tax certificate documents. An amendment is being presented to the board as a separate agenda item in a few moments. As- As part of this overall project, we will also renovate the existing warehouse at 5305 Hollands Road for the park maintenance operations. Funding for this project is also part of the bonding funding that I just mentioned. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance and setting second reading for September 10th, 2024. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the purpose, purchase of the property or the project.
Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance and to schedule a second reading for September 10th, 2024?
Mr. Chairman, I move the approval of the ordinance listed on item E1, which is the acquisition of this real property, 2.71 acres from the EDA.
I'll second that. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Thank you. Item two, ordinance authorizing the reallocation of a portion of the proceeds of the county's 2022 lease financing with Virginia Resource Authority. Lori Gerhardt, Director Finance and Management Services for the first reading and request for the second reading. Welcome, Lori.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This item is related to the board item you just received on purchasing the real property located at 4818 Starkey Road. In order to use the bond proceeds from the 2022B Virginia Resource Authority issuance, this description needs to be changed stating we are acquiring property versus building new as we originally stated in our bond documents. This is just an administrative item where, again, only the description of how the county plans to use the proceeds from the bond issuance needs to be changed. This requires us to sign a revised financing lease document and a revised tax document. So staff does recommend approving the first reading of the ordinance and scheduling the second for September 10th, 2024.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance and to schedule a second reading for September 10th, 2024?
Mr. Chairman, I would move the approval of the ordinance at item E2 that reallocates a portion of these proceeds from the 2022 lease financing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Will clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Lori, what are we going to do with the rest of the money?
Well, there's renovations that need to be done. And then we also are planning to do some renovations on Hollands Road still for the warehouse and building, which Mr. Blunt mentioned, so.
It's our expense, Paul.
Just that little piece.
I just want to make sure, want to make sure we don't need any more.
Right now, we are planning to stay within our budget for what we have for the properties and the changes we need to make.
Thank you.
Item three, ordinance approving the execution of a lease agreement with dot-com properties. The fourth, LLC for 40 parking spaces loaned at 200 East Calhoun Street, Salem, Virginia. Chair recognizes Peter Lubeck, County Attorney.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The Roanoke County Department of Social Services employs more than 100 employees and provides services to citizens of Roanoke County, the town of Benton, and the city of Salem. And as you know, the department is located in a building located at 220 East Main Street in Salem, Virginia. The county owns property with some parking spaces immediately adjacent to the department's building, but these spaces are insufficient to meet the parking needs of all DSS staff members and clients. Since 2001, the county has leased 40 additional parking spaces from dot-com properties for LLC, and these parking spaces are located adjacent at 200 East Calhoun Street. This lease is set to expire on August 31st of this year, and it is proposed that this lease be renewed. Staff has also been investigating and negotiating lease agreements for additional parking with this same company, but because of the impending expiration of the existing lease, it was proposed that this matter be brought forward separately and that it be acted on as an emergency matter. The new lease amounts for the, the 40 spaces is $2,350 per month for a term of 36 months, and a portion of this as DSS operational costs will be reimbursed by the state in percentages between 55 and 75%, depending on the funds available and the, and the time of year. But again, staff recommends that this ordinance be approved on an emergency basis and that the second reading be dispensed with upon an affirmative vote of four-fifths of the members of the board, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is there a motion to approve the ordinance as an emergency ordinance due to time constraints and thereby dispense the second reading upon an affirmative vote of four-fifths of the members of the board?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion on this motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
I just have a couple of quick questions because I know that this is fairly expensive and been going on and the renegotiating after several years and coming back wondering. And I know that we still need additional spaces, that our DSS program is growing very fast.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm curious about a couple of things. One is the mention of the state reimbursement. Is that on the same basis as the salary?
So it is, I actually have some information on this from Director Sugo, which she kindly shared today. So we do get staff and operations budget from the state for, for personnel and operations cost, and it's an 85 15% split.
So it's the same ratio.
So it's the same ratio, but when these funds run out, usually that's in December of each year, we, we access what is called pass-through funds, and that is a percentage of 65 35. So depending on the time of year, we do access different portions, but yes, it is that same percentage that is applied to the personnel.
And so just one final comment, Mr. Chairman, before we, before we vote or have other comments, and that is, I hope that we have something that we're looking to long-term instead of having to rely on a, on a renting situation, something that could be a little more permanent. And I'm wondering if that would also qualify for that same kind of help from the state.
And I know that we have been pursuing other options but have not found anything at this point in time, but we are continuing to look. There are two other parking lots, again, owned by this same company, that we are in the process of negotiating leases for these as well. We anticipate bringing these before you in the somewhat near future, but we will, of course, continue to pursue efforts in that direction.
And with, and with that good work going forward in the future, not for the length of these leases, but if we were to find the land or to build something, would they reimburse us with that too?
And that I do not know, but I can certainly find out the answer to that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Will clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes, thank you, Peter.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to item F, second reading of ordinances and public hearing. Number one, the petition of Joel Calfee to obtain a special use permit to operate a short-term rental on approximately 0.2599 acres of land, so R1, low-density residential district located at 1176 Nova Avenue in the Hollands Magisterial District. Chair recognizes Philip Thompson, Director Planning for the second reading and public hearing. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As you mentioned, this is a application for short-term rental by Joel Calfee. The property is located north of Peters Creek Road, you know, just about a block off of Peters Creek Road. The property to the south of Peters Creek Road, that's the CTE site that the county has purchased, or the schools has purchased. The address is 1176 Nova Avenue, about a quarter of an acre, a little bit more than a quarter of an acre. Single-family residents on the property and they are proposing a short-term rental. Couple photographs, you know, one-story brick ranch with a basement, unfinished basement over. Here's the driveway. The application, they say they have capacity for four cars in the driveway. Couple pictures of the backyard and then the back of the house. Copy of the floor plan shows three bedrooms, two baths, a living room, dining room, kitchen and sunroom. Couple interior photos. Picture on the left is the living room. Picture on the right is the sunroom. You'll see the kitchen on the left and the dining room on the right. Two of the bedrooms in the house, and then lastly, you'll have the third bedroom on the left and then the two bathrooms in the middle on the right-hand side. So as you all are aware, we define a short-term rental as the provision of a room or space that is suitable or intended for occupancy for dwelling, sleeping or lodging purposes for a period of fewer than 30 consecutive days in exchange for a charge for the occupancy. With that, we do have use and design standards. First one is that they have to attain a zoning permit in addition to the special use permit in this case. They have to provide information regarding the parcel. They need to provide the applicant's name, address and contact information, as well if there is somebody else responsible for resolving complaints, they have to provide that information as well. If it will be notified in 30 days if there's any change in the applicant's address or personal contract, contact information, or if the person that resolves complaints, that information changes as well. If the property is sold, the special use permit continues, but the zoning permit would expire and the new owner would have to get a new zoning permit. And then the zoning administrator could revoke the zoning permit if they fail to meet the applicable regulations in this section of the code or any part of the county code as well. Since it's less than five acres in R1 and R2 zoning properties, they are required to get a special use permit. So if you look at the zoning, it is R1 to the north, R1 and C2, which is high intensity commercial to the east, west is R1, and then to the south is C1 and C2. It is neighborhood conservation, which is a land use that establishes single-family residential neighborhoods and are delineated to conserve the existing development pattern. And so it is consistent with the neighborhood conservation, future land use designation. The planning commission held a public hearing on August 6th. There were no citizens who spoke on this position. The planning commission discussed the short-term rental use having been operating since September of last year, the applicant's preference for short-term rental versus long-term rental use, that the applicant operated several short-term rentals in the Roanoke area. The applicant has house rules, neighbors have the applicant's contact information. He does use both VRBO and Airbnb platforms, that the maximum number of guests will be, will be six. The property is adjacent to commercial property fronting Peters Creek Road. And then they talked about the surrounding zoning and land use and also the consistency with the future land use designation. So the planning commission recommends approval of the special use permit for a short-term rental with seven conditions. The first one is that the short-term rental shall be limited to the finished area of the existing residential dwelling, which is approximately 1,400 square feet. The number of overnight guests shall not exceed six people, that there shall be one off-street parking space provided for each guest room in addition to any parking space required for the principal dwelling. The property owner shall provide and maintain in good working order every smoke detector, carbon monoxide detector and fire extinguisher required by law, and that exits required by law shall not be obstructed. The property must maintain their residential appearance. No signage shall be allowed with the short-term rental use. Six, no events such as parties, banquets, weddings, receptions, meetings or similar events shall be allowed with the short-term rental use, and that they shall acquire business license from the commissioner of revenue for the short-term rental use. With that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes, sir. Mr. Thompson, I have some questions with respect to item number three from the planning commission's recommendation. And maybe, maybe just wordsmithing and a look also to you and county attorney. Where we talk about a parking space for each guest room, should that be bedroom or guest room? I know I'm playing word games, but.
Right.
Does guest room work better than bedroom?
Part, part of the issue, if you recall, there are some short-term rentals, they may use a space, right? That's not technically a bedroom, right? It could be a living area where they may have the bed or whatever. So we, looking when we had our work session with the planning, with you all at the work session with the planning commission, so we looked through a lot of different places and that's how the terminology, because we went, thought about, should be bedroom, should be guest room, and looking through that, guest room seemed to be more broader. So it's really the number of accommodations that you're providing versus if I say bedroom and you're physically looking at a bedroom. So anyway, that's why we go with guest room.
My, my concern with respect to this item is, as we've talked before in some of the other applications for special use permits for short-term rentals, I guess my view is want to try to assure that we're going to have off-street parking. And if you've ever been on Nova, you don't want to have cars parking on that street. You want to have them off that street. And this is maybe a decision for the board, but I guess I'd ask you from a staff perspective, having driven by the property and then looking at the photos, do we think they can probably fit three cars on that driveway? It looks long enough, but.
Yeah. And the applicant, in their application, they said they can fit four vehicles in that part, in that driveway, so.
But.
Go ahead.
But you said guest room. So you got three bedrooms, that's three cars.
Correct.
What if, what if somebody wants to put up a rollaway bed in another room other than a bedroom? Then you got possibly four, and you're.
Right.
Next thing you know, you might have, you might have someone who's got an air mattress and wants to put it in the living room, you know, and just, I tell you what I like, I like bedrooms better, to your point.
I don't know, and that's why I'm.
Each situation is different, but you say you can get four cars in that driveway, that's cutting it pretty close.
If you want to change the bedroom, that's, we're okay with that. That's just how we've been doing it since our thing. So if you want us to change that the bedroom, we can change the bedroom further on.
What do you think?
Mr. Lubeck?
And I think.
You're going to have to enforce this.
Not that that will ever be a need.
That will be, will be fun. We could certainly change it to bedroom if that would be the board's preference, or we could clarify and put a definition as to what guest room means. We could certainly do that as well, defining that as a space where guests sleep or spend the night, however the board prefers, we could certainly make that change.
Maybe after guest room, do parentheses for bedroom, keep both terms.
Sure.
How many other properties does the applicant have that he's?
So.
VRBOing.
They can speak to it. He spoke to it at the planning commission, so I'll repeat what he said. My understanding is five total. Two are in Roanoke County, I think two are in the city of Roanoke, and I do not know where the other one is, but it's not Roanoke County. So, you know, the way this kind of got, came around was the other one that he owns in Roanoke County required a zoning permit, and that's how Skyler sent the first notice out was regarding that. And then once that, we also noticed this other one, and that's how it came about. So, so the other one is permit by right, and he has the appropriate zoning permit for that, and so now he's trying to get this one permitted as well.
Okay, any more questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Lubeck, any instructions on the change in the wording, or can you take care of that separately, subject to this?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I now have the microphone on, but if it is the board's desire when making the motion to simply state that the condition would, should be amended so that guest room would also include in parentheses the definition that this includes any room in which guests sleep.
We'll see what we can do. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to find that the proposed.
Wait, wait, wait.
Wait a minute.
Petitioner.
Oh, that's right, the petitioner's not here. Oh, he is here. Do you have anything you want to say?
Yes, sir, good.
Mr. Calfee, come on up.
Board, I want to thank you guys for having me here today. The reason I stand before you is because, as I told the planning commission, everyone should not operate Airbnbs. You guys weren't looking for something else to put on your plate? Bad Airbnbs and bad short-term rentals are why I'm standing here, because there have been neighbor complaints and those things. We currently operate four, not five. We've operated five in the past. We currently operate four. Our first Airbnb was our primary residence that we owned in West Virginia. My wife said it was her dream house. We bought it, and then eight months later, we were packing our bags and headed to Roanoke. We moved here about seven years ago. So we've had four currently in the area, two in the county, two in the city. Like I said, everyone shouldn't operate an Airbnb. We are not a big-time organization. It's me and my wife and our three kids. We run the company, and so we own four. We have over 500 reviews from guests at 4.8 stars. Almost every property that we buy has been dilapidated and poor condition. The one we speak of on Nova Avenue had sat empty for four years. It had been a reverse mortgage foreclosure with no one living in it, bushes growing over the top of the house. So we try to come in and restore neighborhoods, not destroy them. I know all of our neighbors on a first-name basis. Cotton is the older fellow that lives on the right of the house. Andrew just sold his house on the left, and a good friend of mine that we go to church with, he's a deputy in Badger County, lives across the street. So we are on first-name basis with everybody. They all have my cell phone numbers. In the seven years that we've been operating Airbnbs, I've had one neighbor complaint that was fixed in 30 minutes. We took care of all the issues. It was completely the guest's fault. One thing I do believe about short-term rentals is they're kind of, you're always wondering, what could that guest do or even spoke to? Well, could someone throw an air mattress here? Could someone? I encourage you, somebody could do that with all of the properties, whether they're short-term or long-term rentals. My joke to my neighbors when we first bought the property was this, if you don't like your neighbors, at least they're gone in two days. If you get a bad neighbor that bought the house or rents the house long-term, you're stuck with them. So we try to do everything above board. We give all of our employees 1099, or not employees, but our cleaning ladies in their subcontracts, we give them all 1099s. We pay our taxes. We pay the taxes to Airbnb, who are supposed to be remitting them to you guys. We try to do things the right way. We're not trying to be shady. That's why we're standing in front of you. It'd have been a lot easier just to keep kind of pushing this down the road. But we want to stand before you and just tell you, we're trying to do it the right way. We think this is a great area for guests coming in and out of Roanoke. It's right off Peters Creek, so it's easy in and easy out for guests. Guests have loved the house. The neighbors have spoke very positively with people that have come in. So I think the track record should speak for itself, but just wanted to lay that out there for you guys and answer any questions you may have for us.
Thank you. Mr. Calfee, any questions for Mr. Calfee?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Anyone here to speak? Anyone signed up? Come on. Then we'll open the public hearing. And with that said, there being no one here to speak on this petition, we will close the public hearing. I will make a motion. I find the proposed special use permit, one, permits the requirements of Section 30-191 of the Roanoke County Code, and that the proposed special use conforms with the standards set forth in Article 4, Use and Design Standards of the Roanoke County Zoning Ordinance. Two, is in conformance with the Roanoke County Comprehensive Plan, and three, will have a minimum adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood and community. I therefore move that we approve this petition to obtain a special use permit with the following seven conditions. One, the short-term rental shall be limited to the finished area of the existing residential dwelling, approximately 1,400 square feet. Two, the number of overnight guests shall not exceed six people. Three, one off-street parking space shall be provided for each guest room, parentheses, bedrooms or rooms where residents sleep, in addition to parking spaces required for the principal dwelling. All parking shall be provided on-site and shall be located in driveways and other designated approved parking areas. The property owner shall provide and maintain in good working order every smoke detector, carbon monoxide detector, and fire extinguisher required by law. Exits required by law shall not be obstructed. Five, the property must maintain a residential appearance. No signage shall be allowed with the short-term rental use. No events. Six, no events such as parties, banquets, weddings, receptions, meetings, or similar events shall be allowed with the short-term rental use. Seven, a business license shall be obtained from the Commission of Revenue for the short-term rental use. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? Further discussion?
Yes, sir. Trying to be consistent with some of my past votes, I was going to vote no on this application. And I was concerned because, number one, we don't have the owner living in that facility, that building, that house. Number two, this looks a lot like a business, and we're having a business in a residential district. This, to me, has some of the aspects that are similar to White Pelican, where we had an individual who had multiple short-term rentals and was inserting that commercial business into a residential neighborhood. But listening to the applicant in his presentation today, reading the materials, I guess I am willing to vote in favor of it, in part for a couple reasons. Number one, it does join commercially zoned property immediately behind it that's on Peters Creek. Number two, it's different than some of the other short-term rentals we've looked at that have been, what I would say, buried deep into a residential neighborhood. And as the applicant indicated, it has, it's a block away or half a block away from Peters Creek Road. I think it's more centrally located, and in my mind, that kind of better fits the general idea of short-term rentals. So as opposed to being deep into a residential neighborhood, I think it's better located. So for those reasons, Mr. Chairman, I'd be willing to support this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes, thank you. Moving on to item F, second reading. Whoops. Gee, appointments. Any board members have an appointment that has not been given to the clerk and included in the board report for agenda item G? Okay?
None.
Is there a motion to approve the list of appointments set forth in the board report?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If none, clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Consent agenda, all matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and shall be enacted by one resolution in the form or forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion?
No, sir.
If not, is there a motion to adopt all matters on the consent agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? There being none, clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item I, citizens' comments and communications. We have any citizens signed up to speak? Anyone in the audience want to speak? Okay. With that said, we will move on. Item J, reports. Is there a motion to receive and file the reports that have been included in the agenda item under item J?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we receive and file the reports listed under item J.
Okay. Any second?
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item K, work session. Number one, work session with staff to review progress on Safe Streets and Roads for all Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. Megan Cronine, Assistant Director of Planning, will lead that discussion. Momentarily, the board will recess to the third floor for this work session. However, before doing so, I would like to move that the board go into closed session upon the commission of the work session. Item L, closed session pursuant to the Code of Virginia as follows. I move to go into closed session pursuant to Code Section 2.23711, Subparagraph A, Part 5 of the Code of Virginia, for discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding the facilities in the community. Specifically, the board will discuss potential business location or expansion in the Catawba Magisterial District. Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.